Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the September 18th meeting of the Lower Province Township Board of Supervisors. If you could please all rise and join me in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Deb, could you please call the roll?
Absolutely. Mrs. Ekman.
Here.
Mr. Shugeni.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
Here. Okay, thank you. Before our meeting this evening, we held our regular executive session and we discussed legal and personnel matters. And with that, we'll move on to first item on our agenda for this evening. That would be the consent agenda. And if someone would like to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have any questions from board members? Questions from the audience on our consent agenda? Hearing none? We'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried. Okay. Item two on our agenda this evening is listed as a public hearing. We're actually going to be continuing the public hearing and we're going to have it on our October 2nd board meeting. The applicant asked, requested the continuance. So, we're going to skip right on to item three, which is new business. Item 3A is discussion and consideration on traffic impact fee requirements for terror landscaping, 3481 Germantown Pike.
Okay, Madam Chair, if I could just, before the applicant starts, this project was approved by resolution 2014-70, eight years' meeting. This was a revised final plan. The only issue that was left open was the issue of whether or not the traffic impact fees were to be paid and then how they were to be paid. I know there was another issue regarding a light out there, but beyond that, the waivers that were requested, some were approved, some were denied. So, I assume Fred, you're here to talk about the impact fee.
Because that has been what we discussed onsite the other day.
Well, there were some other side issues, which I thought got resolved. Maybe not. In terms of the corner, there was some grading, I think, that was agreed to. And you're required to do that under the resolution.
Not the...
Within the right of way.
And you guys really called the, talk about trees, we're calling county, kind of, calling county, talk about cutting back a strip.
Yeah, perhaps I could maybe just jump in a second. Several staff members met with Fred the other day onsite to talk about those site distance issues as well as the intersection approaches. I think we kind of resolved in our minds what needed to be done in order to resolve those open issues that were part of the resolution. I think the resolution required Fred to address concerns of mine letter as well as McMahon letter. And so, we were tempted to do that the other day. I think we did bring to some resolution those open questions. And I think Public Works and John is here, was going to contact the county about removing vegetation. Fred was going to lower the grade on the arena property by a couple inches to help improve sites. So, I think we kind of resolved those questions pursuant to the resolution.
Right. So, the only, really the only issue, and I know you were working with Casey on the truck turning template and whether or not grading had to be done in order to make those, let those trucks turn and there were site distance issues. But, all those issues, you know, you had asked for waivers, they were denied.
Right.
So, they're not, that's not going to change. I mean, the board, I guess the board could always change their mind on that, but the only issue, and it's in the resolution which you got, was the traffic impact fees. So, I think that's, you know, the discussion, what the board wants to do with that. To, Casey, you've looked at it. The study is based on trips and then you pay based on trips of the proposed use.
Yeah, regarding the impact fee, there was a study that was done in 2007, updated in 2009, that had a certain amount of trips attributed to the land development. We reviewed that study and over the course of the years it has gone by, we actually reduced the requirement of the net new trips that this would produce from approximately 48 trips to, I believe, 14 new trips. So, our recommendation to the township was for the 14 new trips times the impact fee, which was roughly $9,342.26 as the impact fee for the project.
Paul's in your court.
It was mine, then regarding the fee, it could be, I don't know if this was written or verbal, it could be applied to any correction that needed to be done to Wayne Arena's property.
Yep. We agreed to that. We said that you get a credit against your traffic impact fee for any grading that you did and if you had to put in the street light, you get credit for that as well.
So...
Exactly. Okay. Are you good with that?
Yeah. And we did talk about this on the field. Any of the grading and all the improvements, Wayne Arena was at the meeting and it was very cooperative. It was a, it was a good meeting out in the field. I think though what we need to do is, that has to be engineered to some degree so that the final plan, the county is going to have to get a final plan there. When we talk to them about the tree cutting, we're going to let them know, we're going to do some grading along that property frontage and some of that tieback will be in the county right away. So, we aren't changing the edge of road or anything like that. It's just going to be the berm, top of the berm, so that you can see over that portion of the property.
Will I need to go to the county and get a permit for that?
When I, when we talk to the county, we're going to, we'll ask them. We'll see if we can just get a grading, grading permit that extends into their, into their right of way and try to make it as painless as possible.
Okay. I think we have a deal.
Something with the street light?
Oh, do we want a street light or don't we? Casey, want to elaborate a little bit? Why you, I mean, you just brought it up because it's an ordinance.
Yeah, there, between, there being an ordinance item as well as public streets, the confluence of two public streets in the township, a lot of them are lit by street lighting, especially in dark areas. There was a section in the traffic study, again, this goes back to 2007, where it had a high, high crash rate. There is restricted clear sight triangle at that intersection. So, it was a recommendation to the township and our part that the board consider a street light there. And I think it's really up to the boards to discretion if they do want to have that street light at that location.
Casey, is the county requiring the street light?
The county itself is not requiring the street light.
Are you recommending a street light?
I'm recommending, I think, that a street light there would be a good idea for the safety of that intersection because it is in a very dark area and there are narrow lanes on Grange.
What's the cost for something like that?
Good question.
Good question.
If, if it's not a standalone pole, if we can attach...
Yeah, if we can attach to a utility pole. It's basically like a Cobra arm with an LED light. Maybe, John?
It's about between $1,500 and $1,800, depending on how long the arm has to be to extend across into the intersection. But, you're looking between $1,500 and $1,800.
Thank you.
And what is the cost of the grading?
I can't tell you that. I know that some of that work was going to be done in-house by, by Mr. Oskany and his crew. They, he, at least that, that's how he said he had the equipment to be able to do some of that work. So, I can't tell you exactly the limits of that because I don't know, I don't think there's any utilities under where we're going to clear. We're not going that deep. There is a, some old brick stairs at the end of the, at the end of the sight line that really Wayne Arena did not care if those were torn up. They'd been covered by, we just did not want to create an area that was more of a flat area where cars could further go around cars turning there. So, it's going to be, you know, a couple thousand dollars to do that work, I would think. Three, four thousand dollars.
Yeah, I was going to ask, the street light, that would be credited with the traffic impact fee, right?
That's township decision on what your credit is, I mean...
It's up to the board to decide.
Yeah. But, that's what we've indicated to Fred in our meetings with him, that we're perfectly willing to give him a credit for any of the kind of, any public improvement work that he does up there.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm fine with giving you the credit for the, for the traffic light, or the, I'm sorry, for the...
Street overhead, street light.
If that, I mean, it's $9,300 that you're going to have to pay for the traffic impact fee either way, right? So, at least we're giving you credit. That way, we get the, you're paying the same amount of money, but we get the, the street light.
I get that. My, can we bring a cap on the cost of the street light? Just, I mean, I know you said it's about $8,000 to install, is that...
That's correct.
That's a solid number?
Pretty solid.
The credit on the street light and the grading?
Yes. And the grading's about $2,000, I heard Casey say.
Well, I mean, that's just an estimation based on that he's using local crew. He's going to have to spend some time paying his folks and it's not a, it's not a multi-day project, you know, it's...
I'm going to tell you it's a day.
Yeah, day project.
That's assuming he doesn't go to the county for permits and...
Yeah, I mean, you're still, you're going to have to deal with, it's, it's in, some of the work is tying back in the county right of way. So, whether you, you ask them for permission in advance or, which is the proper way to go, and try to get a, a quick permit for grading because you're improving the sightline...
Are you walking on ice?
Am I? No, I mean, that's what I, that's my recommendation.
I would otherwise suggest too, this could be considered a maintenance project as opposed to a construction project.
That's what I'm saying. It's a maintenance project.
So, if we go to the county and say you'd like to conduct some maintenance at this intersection, can you send the guy out to watch what you're doing? I think that's probably the right answer.
Right. And that's the direction I was kind of going with, asking them about, about that.
So, the action in front of the board is that the traffic fee gets paid, but it can be...
But, it gets credited for the work.
Credit against the work, all of that work that's just been described.
Credited for $4,000 worth of in-kind services associated with the regrading in the intersection and the installation of the street light.
Not upset about that.
I'll make a motion that the applicant pays the traffic impact fee, but can be credited against that traffic impact fee for the work required at the intersection and for the street light.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Jill. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second to that?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the board on that motion? You have any questions from the audience on the, yes, Christina, come on up.
I don't know whether, is it a question, but it involves traffic and terror landscaping? Christina O'Donnell, Stoughton Road, with the impact of traffic twice this week, going up Germantown Pike, trying to take a left on Grange, the terror trucks have been all the way across Grange so that not even three cars could take a left.
Blocking the intersection?
Yes. And at school time, that's very hazardous with all the students going the back way to get to Movetin.
Sure, sure. And, and our traffic engineer, you aren't comfortable, once all these improvements happen, that a truck with a trailer can make that turn appropriately, right? They don't...
Can pull out of terror to get to the intersection.
Yeah, I don't think we talked about that aspect. That was, that was applied in the, the resolution was that you should do it.
Right, right. So, we're under, we're under, we're under the impression that that will be improved and will be taken care of and we're not...
But, she's talking about where our driveway exits currently is very close to the intersection. We're going to break it down, but the way from the intersection should be more important for a truck and trailer.
Because currently, they are blocking traffic and I do have a photograph.
Okay. So, we want to make sure that that's, that's not an issue.
Ms. O'Donnell, you feel that'll address the issue?
I don't know the distances, but if you can have a few cars stacked up, especially at rush hour, because I know it's a business, they want to get out early as well as everybody else, that if the right studies have been done and there's enough to stack at least three, four cars and then pull their vehicles out with the trailer, which to me is double traffic, then it, then it should work. I mean, I haven't done the measurements, but twice this week, going around that corner and stop coming to a dead stop because of the truck coming by.
So, moving the driveway will at least help.
Casey, I had asked you that yesterday and I think that you said it's a significant difference, distance back from where it is now.
Yeah, I think it double, it almost doubles the distance that it is today. I mean, from, from the intersection. It's pretty much next to the house today and Mr. Oskany is holding a plan there and you can see that where it is today, it's almost going to be twice as far back from the intersection.
Yeah, and again, that's for you guys. I'm just bringing something that recently came to my attention, I'm sure, before everything gets approved, I feel to deliver this over. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the audience on the motion? Okay, hearing none. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Okay, welcome to Lower Province.
Okay, item 3B will be a discussion of a preliminary final land, plan approval for 3961 Cross Keys Road subdivision 14-01. This is a minor subdivision. We're only going to be discussing this, we're not taking any action this evening on this one. So, welcome, come forward, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael Organski with RJAC Development. And we had application in for a three lot subdivision. You all, you have plans, right? Everybody's got plans?
Yeah.
We were in front of the planning commission last week, I believe it was, last Monday. And we did ask for some waivers and they were in favor of all but one. And the one that they, they recommend were sidewalks on Cross Keys Road. And I did want to discuss that because we're like in the middle of nowhere, there's no sidewalks remotely close to us. And the theory was is that there's going to be a development a quarter mile or so up the street and that one day those sidewalks may tie into that property. And I looked around the neighborhood and I, just recently, I would say within the last year, there were two houses built on Collegeville Road, really the same kind of scenario, and there's no sidewalks. And then there's another one that was just built, it's not even sold yet, on Yurkis Road. Again, no sidewalks. And my concern is, is that our homeowners will put in sidewalks in the middle of nowhere, have to shovel them and maintain them. And then 25 years from now, when they put sidewalks in out there, they'll be cracked and broken and we'll have to, they'll have to put sidewalks in again. So, I'm asking that we get the waiver for the sidewalks and I'm willing to make some kind of stipulation in a deed or whatever I have to do, that those buyers, whoever the buyers are, made aware that if the sidewalks come through, that they're going to be responsible to put them in.
Well, the sidewalks would have to go in anyway. I mean, the buyers would be responsible anyway.
Okay, then that solves that.
If the township ever wants to assess for sidewalks, I mean, that doesn't...
I mean, one of the comments was is that people could walk off of Ashton, step up on the sidewalk for 200 feet. I think that's more of a hazard than just staying on the road, personally.
So, currently Ashton doesn't have sidewalks as well?
No. Mr. Organski, you've received all of the review letters?
Yes.
From Tim Woodrow dated August 18th?
Yep.
McMahon and Associates dated August 25th?
I believe I have them all.
The Comida Planning Review Letter?
Yeah, I have all, I have all review letters.
August 20th. Or, yeah, suburban lighting letter?
Yeah.
August 18th. Mike, I'm looking at your executive summary, so there's some comments in there from the township departments. Have they all been discussed with the applicant?
Yes, they have. The, I'll just run down through the summary of mine. The, this codes department brought up an idea about this, according to the driveways. The applicant...
Indicated previously, a willingness to comply. Park and rec fees would be collected. The township police department does not anticipate any adverse impact. The sidewalks you just spoke about, the, there what, has been some discussion about storm sewers. There is some, that was, occurred at the planning commission. There are some existing. It is, we are not aware of any problems that are existing and the plans show some seepage pits per each of the lots. So, it is not recommended that, that needs to be addressed further. The landscape architect, I'm sorry, the landscape consultant, Comida, has recommended replacement trees and also there's some large trees on the property that need to be afforded protection. Other corrections were drafting, which are will complies and as are the, the site distance measurements and clear sight triangles. I believe that's all, I believe that's all the comments.
So, everything's complied except you're looking, the only waiver that is outstanding is the sidewalk waiver, is that?
I have a question. It just, it says in the summary that sidewalks are recommended by the township engineer. Tim, could you speak to that?
Yeah, I guess maybe there's a, just by way of clarification, John, when the board considers this plan, the applicant will be seeking four waivers, I suspect, from the subdivision code. There is an obligation under the code to allow the board to require road widening, curbing, sidewalk, storm drainage improvements. We discussed this at length with the planning commission and I think the planning commission, as well as staff, would agree, there is not much purpose in road widening, curbing, storm drainage improvements. And we discussed sidewalk for quite a while. The planning commission concluded that maybe sidewalk was not appropriate on Ashton, but they wrestled a bit with whether we should propose it on Cross Keys. I think the motion by the planning commission was to install sidewalk on Cross Keys. And I don't know that it was a unanimous decision. I think there were those who thought maybe it was extraneous and others who thought maybe it was of some value for some pedestrian safety. I don't know that I feel strongly one way or the other. There is really no sidewalk in the area and any sidewalk extension would be part of a much larger project at some point. So, we really were kind of punting that back to you guys as to, you know, what you thought appropriate for, for sidewalk.
Well, it's personally, since there are no sidewalks in the area, I feel that they may not be warranted in this location. That's my opinion.
I would agree.
Mike, do you and Bill, do you have the proposed plan, subdivision plan? I just like, that might be helpful to the audience to see. The aerial is helpful, but...
I don't think you do. I think it's just a paper plan.
Okay. Sorry.
Yeah.
Is that a full set?
I haven't seen a digitized version.
If you, if you don't have it, that's all right. I don't want to, but basically it takes that, for the audience that has really no idea what we're talking about, it takes that corner piece where that red dot is, there's two existing homes.
Can you point it out a little bit?
Well, if you want to, you're probably better versed than I am.
What's happening is this is the existing residence and then we're taking a piece from the one over here on Cross Keys.
Sir, sorry. Can you grab the microphone for us, please?
Ah, sure.
It comes out of there.
They won't hear you. They had home on TV.
All right, then this, this is the existing residence and we're taking that corner, this corner up to this point and creating two lots. We're going to remove that house.
Excuse me, Mr. Organski. We did find it, if that would be helpful.
Oh, okay. There we go.
There you go.
Same deal. Here's where they're proposing the sidewalk, come on here. There's no sidewalk in, on Ashton.
Very helpful. And then that third lot would, is existing home in the back, that will remain on Ashton.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, the outside, outstanding item is how the board would want to proceed, give you some direction for the sidewalk. So far, we heard two board members would be okay to consider a waiver for that. I think the next thing is to prepare a resolution.
If the board, I mean, if the board consensus to move forward with the plan to approve it, then I would bring that back October 2nd with all the review letters, the will comply issues. There, I did find the waiver. There is a waiver letter from Ludgate Engineering, right? And this is, as Tim said, there's four waivers. One is a waiver for the 25, 26 foot wide minimum partway across Keys, curves and storm sewers is the second, the sidewalk is the third, and there's a waiver requested for 25-foot radius for street intersections. So, they're your four waivers. They would come back in front of you, assuming you, one way or another, either approve or deny. So, it sounds like the only one that's really up for discussion is sidewalk. And so far, two of you are in favor of waiving that.
Well, I would be okay with the waiver for sidewalks. I did have a question though. You brought up about the 25-foot radius, turning radius. Why could we not comply with that?
That's probably a question for the applicant's engineer to say.
I know we did discuss it last week and I, my engineer was here. I don't remember exactly why he said that. I, I just think because like it's existing and for what you're going to gain from tearing it up, if I recall, Tim, that was the discussion?
Yes, Ms. Ekman, I don't know there's a reason we could not improve that radius to 25-foot. I think it's a rather minimal improvement. I think the existing radius is like a 20-foot curb radius, so additional five feet doesn't gain us all that much in... curb radius, so additional five feet doesn't gain us all that much in, in road width. And the Planning Commission and I agree that Ashton being such a low-volume roadway, that there wasn't a huge problem with vehicles, if they needed more room to encroach into the oncoming lane to make a turn, if you had a trailer or terror landscape, he was coming in to do some work. That need to have a wider radius wasn't, wasn't severe.
Okay.
So I think the Planning Commission was okay with that waiver.
All right, it's helpful to know what the existing condition is, so, great. Okay, so we'll direct the solicitor, prepare the resolution, and would that be on our October 2nd?
October 2nd.
Agenda?
Correct.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Coming from the audience.
Oh, yes, Christina.
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the sidewalks. I am on the Planning Commission, and if I remember correctly, we voted unanimously to waive the sidewalk on Ashton, and if I remember correctly, we voted unanimously to encourage the sidewalk on Cross Keys. One thing that came before us when this plan did is that Superior Tube is building around the corner. And as the comprehensive plan for Lower Providence calls for sidewalks in a walkable community, we need to start getting sidewalks in somewhere. And if you have been back there to walk, or you've seen people walking and pushing strollers, it needs to start somewhere, and that's with a I, and I believe the rest of the people in the Planning Commission's there.
Okay.
Needs to start. It should be joining Superior Tubes. It's not, they're a plan that they're selling, with the lots down by, the Vincent Road, kind of down around the corner, which you can't.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Maybe we need to look at a larger view of sidewalks. I know we have a sidewalk plan that was prepared, but I don't know if it was done for up in this area, it was Audubon, from what I remember. No, no.
Before my time.
Oh, it was recently, I think that was, I think that was Audubon, it was the, um-
Ms. Ekman, there is a sidewalk plan, I think, or pedestrian plan for the business park.
Business park, right, but it was business park and it-
Yeah, but it was something more than that?
Yeah, yes. Okay, well, maybe we could just all, for next meeting, we could look at an overall to see if, if there's possibility of connections, or if it's something that, you know.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, please.
As Mr. Roy stated, if they go in, the homeowner will be responsible anyway. So if it's five or 10 years from now, I mean, it's all going to happen at one time if it happens, I believe, right?
It never happens that way. Sidewalks, never happens.
Okay.
So.
Well, when the need comes, the buyer, the homeowner will be responsible.
And that doesn't happen that often either. I was responding to your suggestion, you were going to put something in the deed to require homeowners to do it, and, you know, that's not a real good way. It's a policy decision. The board's got to decide, do they want to start sidewalks or have sidewalks in that area of the township or not? And it sounds like on this project, maybe not. But, you know, the argument always is, there's no sidewalks near me, why should I put some in? That's, you know, I think we've all heard that hundreds of times. But it's a policy decision, it's up to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we can move on to item 3C, discussion and consideration of a tree vitalized grant application for Cranberry Park improvements. Carl, you're going to have something for us?
Okay. Thank you. On August 25th, I met with Ms. Sabo O'Brien, she's the Conservation Coordinator at Perkyomi Watershed, and we discussed some of the successes we've had with tree vitalized grants over the last couple of years, Hoy Park and Gabriel's Field that we did this year. And we talked about a couple of different properties, we went toward some properties that we thought a, another grant would be successful at, and she agreed, she'd like to submit on our behalf a tree vitalized grant for Cranberry Park to increase the buffer along the tributary there that leads into the Perkyomi. What'll happen is, if we give a letter of support, she'll be able to submit the application. Her role will be overseeing the application, gathering the volunteers for the project, ordering the plants, the shrubs, the trees, doing invasive removal, and instructing the volunteers on the proper way of, of planting. We would help as needed during regular business hours, and then once the trees are in, like we're doing at Hoy Park and Gabriel's Field, we would just maintain them over the years. So at this time, I'm just looking for the go-ahead to give her a support letter.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Would someone like to entertain a motion to authorize a support letter for the tree vitalized grant?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. Any questions on the motion? Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor consent by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, our item four, our announcements, upcoming meetings. There will be a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, September 24th at 7:00 PM. Anybody interested in the text changes for the Ridge Pike Business District in the upper part, or the western part of the township? Should, are encouraged to attend that meeting. There will be a zoning hearing board meeting on September 25th at 7:00 PM. And from what I saw, Mike, you have, they have quite a lot of things. I think it's seven items on the agenda, maybe?
That's correct.
Okay. Would you mind giving us a real brief? Sorry.
Okay.
I just think it's important.
Sure, the, um, the vast majority, there's five of them that are various residential properties, setback issues primarily. There is also a consideration of the property on Ridge and Grange, the two-acre property, which would be a applicant's asking for a change of use, as well as a impervious coverage relief, and that's five, six, there's one, and, oh, and then there's the matter of the, there's the tabers that have been before the board, a couple of hearings, it's been a continued matter, it's, they have basically properties down in the section of the movie theater lots, if you will, that they're trying to combine to, to make happen for a single building lot, single residence. And so those are the seven matters.
Good memory, Mike. Thank you. And then our annual community fall festival will be held Saturday, September 27th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM here at Eagleville Park. And more details can be found on the township website. It's always a very fun day, long day for our township staff, but it's worthwhile for residents to come out, and I, I know people from surrounding communities also take advantage of that wonderful event that you put on, Carl. Okay, comments and other business. Board members, do we have any comments?
Madam Chairwoman, I can update you that on Monday, September 8th, I attended the Planning Commission meeting. On the agenda was, obviously, the Cross Key Roads development that we just heard. Additionally, uh, the plan by a local developer to put townhomes on the Superior Tube property was discussed before the Planning Commission. They were not there for any kind of approval of the plan, but just to introduce the concept to the Planning Commission. Additionally, the following evening, on the 10th, I attended the Park and Rec meeting. We welcomed our two new student ambassadors to the, to the board, and we planned for the upcoming fall festival. So, again, and Carl can reiterate this, we're looking for volunteers for help out with parking and setup and takedown. We're going to give any community service hours to any of the students that need it for completion of requirements through their school or any other kind of community service. So if you're looking for some opportunities, please contact Carl in the Parks and Rec Department.
Thank you, Patrick. And, um, an update on our, an outstanding item that we had in the past for our, our audience members that come out frequently, you might remember Brant Park, and there were some outstanding issues and items that were not completed out of that development. And our Public Works crew has, has been hard at work out there. John, maybe you want to give us an update on what you guys have completed out there?
Yes, um, we had a complete sidewalk and apron work. There was some spalling and cracking of various sidewalks, and there's one more item that has to be completed, a swell on one of the lots. I have to meet the engineer out there to go over that, but basically, it's moving along, and everything's working out fine. And we're using escrow money to do the work.
Excellent, thank you. Yes, that was work that the developer failed to complete, and so the township has used that escrow money to, to do that work, and so hopefully, those residents will finally be, have a neighborhood that's finished after all this time. So, thank you very much, we appreciate that effort. Okay, we'll open up courtesy to the floor. Any comments from the audience? Oh, gotta have library, library events, excellent.
Library events, yeah. I'm Mary Shaw, and I'm on the Board of the Library. And first of all, I just want to say that plans are moving ahead very nicely for the improvements in the library. But what I'm here of tonight is just to announce two of our events that are coming up. The Haunted Garden, one of our board members, Lisa Yanek, opens her garden and sets up a really nice haunted garden that's free to the public, and any donations that come that night are given to the library. I don't have the exact dates, but it's Halloween week, so it's the last week of October. I didn't have the exact dates at the last meeting. And then we have our annual fall fundraiser coming up, boots, books, brews, and beets. And this year, the beets are going to be country beets, so it's, books, brews, and beets go country. There's going to be five microbrews there, and wines, and food from various establishments in the community, and country line dancing with instruction, and a nice night for all. That's November the 8th, 7 to 10, I believe it is. It's $35, tickets bought ahead, and $40 if you buy at the door.
Excellent, thank you, Mary. Now, Lisa lives on Summit, right?
She's on Summit, yeah.
So anybody that wants to take advantage of the haunted garden, that she lives on Summit?
Yeah.
Can't, can't miss it.
You can't miss it. You can't miss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other comments from audience members? Anybody's been out Long Ridge Pike and coming into the township complex, you'll see a nice large emotes building going up, it's like, overnight, it's sprung up, and so it's nice to see the progress. And if you look at the fundraising sign, I think that's having a little bit of progress too, right, Eileen? Needs to get a little more, need a little more red, but it's good to see, so. Okay, if we don't have anything else, we'll call for the adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor consent by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.